The United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under-gathered in the physical with liberty and justice for all.
Counselor may have the Open Public Meetings Act statement.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, ladies and gentlemen, in compliance with NJSA 10:4, the Open Public Meetings Act. Notice of this special meeting, but regularly scheduled meeting of the Jackson Township Planning Board, has been published and posted in all appropriate locations.
Thank you.
Mr. Dolan, Dr. Campbell. Yes. Mr. Riker.
Mr. Dolan is here. Okay.
Mr. Bernstein.
Here.
Mr. Herman.
Here.
Mr. Canderozzi.
Mr. Wall.
Mr. Fleming.
Here.
Mr. Recording. Mr. Herring. Mr. Hudak.
Here.
Thank you.
Thank you. It's on the agenda during an executive session. We're going to move that to the end. It's just going to be a brief one, about five minutes. So I don't want to hold up anything right now. We have a motion for the payment of voucher reporting secretary for this evening, February 28th, 2022, please.
Please.
All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you. Stop. The minutes that we have, we're going to table these meeting minutes until the next meeting, until everyone has had adequate time to review that. So we're going to jump right to engineering and planning matters. Gentlemen, Mr. Cle, you want to lead off, please?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Just very, very briefly, in relating to the applications, the site plan applications in relation to solar and the charging stations. I think the board has been looking at the different applications, and there was always the question, will the applicant be able, will he be willing to incorporate solar into his project? And typically, the answer is, of course, you know, no problem. But, you know, how is that effectuated, or how is that carried through the approval, is really the question. I think it'll be fleshed out in the different applications that we hear. But as far as resolution compliance and long-term.
Gentlemen, in the back. Gentlemen. Thank you. Go ahead. I'm sorry.
I think the applications, as they come in, they'll flesh out, we'll hear the discussion. And when you say, yes, you'll incorporate, what does that mean? Half the roof, a quarter of the roof? And what's the guarantees to, you know, to make sure that that happens? A final sign-off from the engineer that it's, yeah, there's solar there, but how much? Again, it's more just a discussion item, but I think it's important that we, please consider it. I know that the question's coming.
What are your recommendations on how we...
It's really a kind of a case by case. And the applicant agrees to incorporate solar. When he does the analysis, I'm in the shade all the time. It's like, I can't really do so. You know, he comes back to me, where the board is, says, I can't do this, was X, Y, and Z, and the board relieves them of that condition. Is it half the roof, all the roof? It's, you know, it's, I would say case by case, and let's see what the applicant's put on the table and offer.
Well, during your review, when you add the question about solar and charging stations to your checklist.
Yep.
In your discussions.
Sure, sure. It's usually in my report, you know, somewhere, we usually cite utilization, talk about charging stations. But sure, we can, you know, make it a point that is addressed.
Okay. Any thoughts? Good. Okay. Thank you, Mr. Cle. Mr. Peters, hand.
Nothing to add, Mr. Chairman. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Legal matters.
Yes, Mr. Chairman, we have three resolutions for this evening. First is Resolution 202202, Resolution granting preliminary and final site plan approval for a training center in Annex Building where the Matitacong Golf Course eligible to vote are Mr. Dolan, Mr. Riker, Mr. Wall, Mr. Fleming, Mr. Herring, and you, 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 Mr. Chair.
Has everyone had adequate time to review this resolution? Everybody okay voting with that? Yes? Okay. Someone care to make a motion?
Motion to approve.
Roll call, please.
Mr. Dolan.
Yes.
Mr. Campbell.
She's not eligible.
Mr. Riker.
Yes.
Mr. Wall.
Yes.
Mr. Fleming.
Yes.
Mr. Hudak.
Yes, thank you.
And Mr. Herring, too.
And Mr. Herring.
Resolution, it's the same folks eligible for all three resolutions. 202203, granting the time extension to Aleve, New Jersey, Inc., also known as West Commoner Business Park. That's a final time extension through June 30, 2022.
Anyone care to make a motion, please? Vote to approve. Roll call.
Mr. Dolan.
Yes.
Mr. Riker.
Yes.
Mr. Wall.
Yes.
Mr. Fleming.
Yes.
Mr. Hudak.
Yes.
Mr. Herring.
And lastly, Mr. Chairman, 202204, granting preliminary and final site plan approval with variance relief for the Whitesville Business Park located off of Whitesville Road. That's the old XL site. Eligible, same eligible folks to vote.
Can we get a motion from someone?
Mr. Rollan.
Yes.
Mr. Riker.
Yes.
Mr. Wall.
Yes.
Mr. Fleming.
Yes.
Mr. Hudak.
Yes.
And Mr. Herring. Last, okay.
Yes. Okay. Board matters. Anybody have anything they'd like to bring to our attention this evening? No? Okay, right into the applications. So... We're going to start with the North Cooksbridge Road. Yes. We have block 8601, lot 41 through 28, North Cooksbridge Road LLC.
Mr. Chairman, before you begin that, would Sal Alfieri, on behalf of the applicant, would you mind taking number two, which is just an extension ahead of us? Because we're going to take a lot longer than that would take, and Mr. Borden's only to hear for that application.
Yeah.
Thanks.
Okay, so we're going to start with then block 11701, lots nine, 25, 26, and 33, Rutherford Estates.
Mr. Chairman, just for the record, Mr. Herman is eligible to vote this evening as the alternate number one.
Thank you.
Mr. Borden, thank you for raising your right hand. Do you solemnly swear or affirm that the testimony information, questions, or comments you about to present before the board will represent the truth, whole truth, and nothing but the truth?
I do.
However, I jumped in front of the chairman. You did. That's okay. Have a seat for a second.
Thank you.
Gentlemen, do you have anything?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Application for an extension of a final major subdivision, Resolution 2016-15, memorialized in August of 2016, granted major subdivision approval to establish 20 residential building lots on the property. The general terms and conditions of the approval were extended to December 4, 2021, through the Permanent Extension Act and the executive order. The map has been recorded, the lots exist, and we didn't have the total details, but I believe the filings commission notes that there has been a zoning change after the map was filed, or after the protection period inspired, and are requiring that the applicant come back and get an extension for the, say, the general terms and conditions of the original approval. Even though the map's been filed and the lots are created, Mr. Borden, you know, can correct me, but I believe construction started on one or two of the lots. So I'll say the denial of the extension request would just mean a lot of applications going to the Board of Justice. It's, in my mind, when the map's filed, it's created, there's no, you know, the zoning changes, the original terms and conditions apply. So they're looking for an extension to... 2020, or December 4, 2022, and would have two more extensions available.
And this is all online.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. We'd ask the witness to indicate what the previous zoning was, what the current zoning is, what the protection period takes them to, what they're asking the protection period to be extended to, and to give some information as required under the land use law as to why they're here requesting the extension.
Thank you. Shaw, here. It's actually, Mr. Burton is the attorney.
Mr. Alfieri, a conflict arose, himself, he can't.
You'll have to speak into the microphone.
I'm sorry. And a conflict arose, and Mr. Alfieri could not appear on behalf of the applicant. So I'm sitting in for the able hands of Mr. Alfieri. And I think I'm going to cede my spot to Mr. Borden to present to and answer any questions of the board.
I'm sorry, what was your name?
Noah Burton, B-U-R-T-O-N, and that's Burton Jacobovich.
In light.
Thank you.
Yep.
Light.
Okay, thank you.
Good evening. Thank you to Ms. Alfieri. I appreciate the consideration. I believe we will be brief. I hope we will. The project is known as Rutherford Estates. It is located along Route 571, Cassville, Tom's River Road, just south of Route 528, or West Veterans, or East Veterans Highway, directly across from the Cassville Firehouse. As Mr. Cle noted, the subdivision was granted a final approval in 2016. That approval was valid until December 4, 2021, and we are seeking a one-year extension until December 4, 2022. The property is located in a split zone. Most of the property is in the PV zone, the Pine Lands Village Zone, and a small portion of the property along Tom Cassville Road is in the PVC2 zone, a Pine Lands Village commercial zone. The project was approved as a sub-23-lot subdivision, which consists of 20 single-family, one-acre residential lots, minimum one-acre size, two commercial lots in the PVC2 zone. One of those lots pursuant to the conditions of our 2016 approval is to be dedicated to the Cassville Fire Department, and then a single basin for the stormwater management lot. So 23 lots, 20 residential, two commercial, and one stormwater. The, Mr. Cle did issue a resolution compliance letter for the project in May 5 of 2021. He is correct. Construction has started on the project. The property has been cleared, and we're in the process of beginning to construct the drainage system in the roads. The final plat, however, was not filed. We did post the bonds to start the site work, but the plat was not filed. And that's the reason for the extension, is to allow additional time to file the plat. The zoning is still the same. It has not changed. So there's no change in the zoning or master plan at all. But we are simply seeking that extra time to file the plat.
Anything further?
I have nothing further. And maybe just, there's been no changes whatsoever to the plans since Mr. Cle had signed a resolution compliance letter in May of 21. Correct. Well, because it dates, it directed back to December of 2021. We actually applied for the extension in October. So the intent was that we'd be here before December 4 and get a year, but it's, you know, it's irrelevant, you know, we're here today, and we're just seeking until December 4 of 2022.
May I follow up on that question, Mr. Chairman? Your intent, for the reason for this extension, is in essence solely to have time to file that plat within the...
That's correct.
Anything else? Yes.
Okay. Oh. I was just reading off the 2016 resolution, so.
So, sorry to be a lawyer, got to ask the question. No, I wouldn't hear. So that was, was that a condition of approval or an offer of approval to happen?
I believe that was an offer.
So what happens, so let's put it on the record, though. What happens if that lot is not dedicated to a public purpose? What happens to it?
I apologize, Sean. This is what happens when all these years, five years goes by, and I forget. The resolution does discuss the fact that the township, district, and fire companies do not wish to have the lot. I'm sorry. I was reading the front page of the resolution, but in page two, it discusses what Mr. Fleming states, which is the district does not wish to utilize the lot.
So then what becomes of the lot?
Just a commercial lot in the PVC2 zone.
Did you hear the question?
No, he was on my deaf side. I'm sorry. And that's not, not joking. He really is on my deaf side. I'm deaf in my left ear. No. Oh, no. I appreciate that. I wouldn't survive leaving the room if I did that.
Okay. I guess we have to open this up to public comment. If anyone cares to comment on this application, time, step up to the microphone. All in favor? Okay. Any further comment from anyone? Questions? Nope. All right. Anyone care to make a motion on this? Roll call.
Mr. Dolan.
Yes.
Dr. Campbell.
Yes.
Mr. Riker.
Yes.
Mr. Bernstein.
Yes.
Mr. Herman.
Yes.
Mr. Wall.
Yes.
Mr. Fleming.
Yes.
Mr. Herring. Mr. Hudak.
Yes. Okay.
Thank you very much. Thank you again for your considerations.
So now, go to block 8601, lot 41, 28, North Cooksbridge Road LLC. And Mr. Cle.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Application has some history. I believe the last time we heard anything from the applicant was back in July of 2021. The application originally came in as a 11,300-square-foot professional office building. We're now down to 7,000 square feet. There was a number of variances in design waivers that were required in conjunction with the original application. Variance-wise, we're down to none, and design exception as far as the, actually eliminated the design exceptions as well. So I think the heated word has to say as far as reducing the size of the building, bringing the application work compliant with current standards. Of course, the question of solar and the charging stations, we simply, I would like to hear from the applicant.
Okay.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Our office has a report dated February 18. As Mr. Cle had indicated, it appears that they reduced the number of variances in design waivers down to zero. We went back and forth a number of times as it relates to the issues and items that were important to the board. We'd asked the applicant to put forward his revised plan in some detail so the board understands how we got from point A to point C. And that's all we have for now. Thank you.
Thank you.
Good evening, Mr. Chairman, members of the board. Salvatore Alfieri, Cleary Giacobi Alfieri, and Jacobs, on behalf of the applicant. As your board professionals have indicated, there have been several iterations to this plan. This is actually our third public hearing. It's, the plan started with 11,000-plus square feet with many variances. We're now down to a two-story, 7,000-square-foot building, completely variance-free, fully conforming with the zone. We did provide traffic testimony at an earlier hearing, and there were no traffic issues associated with the project. Obviously, now we're, now we're like 60% of what we were, so there, there are fewer, less traffic issues, or fewer, zero traffic issues. We do have one witness tonight, Mr. Halpert, who was our engineer. We're going to ask that he summarize the plan revisions. We do have some exhibits that were submitted in advance that we would put up on the screen, and then we would address all the technical comments contained within the professional reports. The two issues that I believe Mr. Peters raised, or I'm not sure who raised it now, relating to the electric vehicle charging stations and the solar, we have, we will comply with the new statute as it relates to the charging stations. They haven't been put on the plan yet because it's relatively new, and we're not sure how your board professionals want to handle that. But the statute does say that those stations do count towards the parking, so by dedicating whatever number of spaces are required, we won't, it won't trigger a parking variance. As it relates to solar, the applicant's not yet in the position to determine whether solar would work for this site or not. The building is a lot smaller now. It's only a 3,500-square-foot footprint. They're willing to consider it, but we're not in a position to commit tonight to the solar. And if the board has another opinion, then we'll live with whatever the board's opinion is. But I'd like to, Mr. Halpert was sworn in and qualified two times now, but he's here again to do the same.
Again, sir, do you solemnly swear or affirm that the testimony information, questions, or comments you about to present before the board will represent the truth, whole truth, and nothing but the truth?
I do.
And as Mr. Alfieri indicated, you've been previously sworn in, your credentials accepted, correct?
Correct. Thank you.
Thank you.
So, Mr. Halpert, while we're, we'll be consistent with the exhibit that Anthony placed on the screen, why don't we start with the architectural, and we'll work our back, way back to the site plan. So the board can see an architectural rendering that has been submitted to the board. That rendering does identify the materials?
The architect plan does identify the materials. The color scheme is not called out on the architect plan, and it will be called out. The footprint has been reduced to 3,500-square-foot footprint and 7,000 square foot of floor space.
And Anthony, could you bring up the latest site plan exhibit? There's a colored rendering, a colored site plan, is there not?
No, this is the rendering, and we have a site plan exhibit, 228 site plan exhibits.
What do you say?
This is the circulation. There's site plan. Yes.
Okay, can you describe for the board the changes that were made to address the various comments we've previously received?
Mr. Alfieri, part of doing that, a move, I know was submitted to remove marking it, though. Can you describe when it was submitted?
Yeah. Can you just identify that exhibit, please?
This, this is the site plan exhibits, and...
And...
Revision date.
The revision date is 12/9/21.
Okay.
Please continue.
The, the site plan that was submitted with the revision date, 12/9/21, is, shows 35 parking spaces. The original plan that was submitted to the board with variances had four rows of parking and variances on setbacks, and there were variances on square footage, on parking supply. The current plan is showing three rows, three rows of parking with another row along the building. There are 35 spaces. There are two 24-foot aisles, two 26-foot aisles. The 35 spaces with two handicapped spaces. And there is, the original plan had the refuse enclosure in the front. The original pla... The original plan had the refuse enclosure in the front. The refuse enclosure has been moved with, there's an aisle to get to it, and that provides more access to the building. It is a 15-by-20 refuse enclosure for both solid waste and recyclables. And with these changes, the applicant is not seeking variances, any variances on the site plan.
Did you provide also, the other exhibit is the turning template?
There's an exhibit for showing a turning template for both refuse and for fire circulation.
That would be the next, Anthony, the one you had up previously. And while he's bringing it up, can you identify that exhibit and the last revision date?
The last, the last revision date is, this is landscape, the original exhibit that you brought up would be the circulation exhibit. Correct. Revision date of 12/9/21, and this is the circulation exhibit and showing the fire circulation as per the Jackson Fire turning templates.
And you showed this plan to Stanley O'Brien, the fire official, and he signed off on it?
Correct. This was submitted to the fire official, and, and he signed off on the plan.
And also, you, there are two reports, one from Mr. Peters dated... Somewhere here. And one from Mr. Cle. Mr. Cle's is dated February 11. There are various, Ernie, I, for whatever reason, I just had to report, and I can't find it.
February 18 is review number five.
Thank you. There are various technical comments, many of which were discussed during earlier presentations. But are there any, are you prepared to indicate this evening that you will address all of those technical comments?
Yes.
As a condition of approval?
Yes.
That's really all we have, Mr. Chairman. We're prepared to answer any questions you have.
Just to get it on the record, there's, I see here, there's a first floor and second floor. There is no basement, correct?
Correct. There is no basement. There is a crawl space.
Is there a way to put the refuse area back to head of the, one back to the passage at home?
There is room. The refuse enclosure could be pushed farther back.
Who else? Nope? Oh. I'm sorry.
I think, so, we, I don't know what's up with it. It's big enough. So... Then, then it, for all, it's like the same floor. Let's give a little piece of purpose and add.
I just had a Howell Township meeting at 7 o'clock where they voted no on a solar farm instead of a warehouse. So some towns don't see it the way you do. I don't know why. Now, you make, yours make more sense. It's hard for us to commit because my, well, only because they haven't analyzed the costs associated with the solar versus what the benefits are. They haven't gotten that far in the construction details.
But it's also environmental. So, which limits me.
Okay. I don't write the checks, so I have to look to my client for that. I'll try, I'll get you an answer before you act tonight.
Okay.
Just a thought. Could a condition of any approval the board may grant be conditioned upon some type of feasibility study, feasibility analysis of solar? It can be submitted, you know, to me and to the board. If I didn't have any problems with it, just move it ahead. If I did, of course, bring it to the board. That, that's just a suggestion to move, to move the thing ahead.
That's a, that's a fair suggestion, Mr. Cle. So that's fine.
Anyone else? Well, exactly. So the two attorneys just looked at each other. So when does it become feasible? What's the trigger to make it feasible?
We trust Mr. Cle's decision.
I would say if the entire roof is solar, good job. It's feasible. It's good. If you come back and say, well, we only want to do half the roof because, who knows, X, Y, and Z, I might have a little discomfort with that, and I would bring that to the board.
So the threshold, so that the applicant understands as well, the threshold is not economics, really. The threshold is how, is, is the provision of the solar to the extent the roof will cover, right? Roofer, I guess, the parking.
But if there's utilities on the roof that we may not be aware of, then, you know, would eliminate the ability to put solar. There's a good reason where you can't, you know, doesn't mean you can't do any solar because of the mechanicals, but that's a reason why you can't do the whole thing.
Okay.
Yeah, and as long as we can do it administratively and not have to come back to the board, unless, of course, Mr. Cle is dissatisfied, then... Yeah, and as long as we can do it administratively and not have to come back to the board, unless, of course, Mr. Cle's dissatisfied, then-
That's, uh, that's fair. I just wanted to make sure that it was a trigger, so that there was no argument as to what the trigger likely is. I appreciate that. Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Okay. If this, I like to open it up to public comment. Anybody wishing to comment about this application, please step up to the microphone. All in favor? Okay, everyone. Any further comments for anyone? Yes, Ms. Campbell?
I agree.
Yes.
Sometimes you have to, you have to hit someone over the head and- I know. Understood.
We appreciate it, we really do. Okay. So with that, um, can I get a motion?
Mr. Dolan?
With, uh, Ms. Campbell's, uh, recommendations, yes.
Dr. Campbell?
Yes.
Mr. Riker?
Yes.
Mr. Bernstein?
Yes.
Mr. Herman?
Yes.
Mr. Wall?
Yes.
Mr. Fleming?
Yes.
Mr. Herring?
Yes.
Mr. Huddak?
Yes.
Thank you.
Congratulations.
Thank you. Who would have thunk it, Ernie?
You want to switch up?
You're not here. One more.
So we're going to switch up, uh, Mr. Alferi, if that's okay with you, uh, we're going on, uh, block four-one-zero-one, lot two-zero-point-oh-two, Jackson Woods SC clubhouse.
Oh, okay.
Okay, Mr. Cle, go ahead.
Um, thank you, Mr. Chairman. Application for preliminary and final, uh, major site plan associated with the, uh, clubhouse and rec area for the Jackson Woods, um, uh, residential or multifamily development. Uh, resolution two thousand twenty-one oh-six, uh, memorialized in August of, uh, two thousand and twenty-one, ran in a preliminary, uh, major subdivision of four hundred and sixty-five multifamily units and final major subdivision approval for a hundred and eighty-six of those multifamily units. Um, the, uh, that approval deferred consideration of the site plan component for the, uh, for the clubhouse to a future date. The app has submitted, um, the application, that's here, we're, what we're here for tonight. Um, the, um, clubhouse recreation component of the, um, of the Jackson Woods, um, development. Um, it's, um, pretty much variance, um, free, except for a front yard setback to the, uh, uh, parking area. There is a design exception for the number of driveway connections to the, um, to the internal, um, roadway system of the, of the development. Um, we provided some technical revisions to the, um, to the applicant, um, which, um, should be addressed. And of course, the, the solar and the charging station proposals for, for the building.
Thank you. Mr. Peters?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. We have a report dated December first, two thousand twenty-one. Mr. Cle was correct, it appears that the only variance it's requested is for a parking area setback. If the board recalls, when the applicant was here last, they talked about deferring the site plan because a future developer was going to come in and they had their own particular type of product that they wanted to build. So it wasn't the Tom Bavino clubhouse, this is, I think, the D.R. Horton clubhouse. So to that extent, this is more specific as opposed to the general layout we may have seen in previous plans. So we'd simply ask the applicant to take a few moments, go through both Mr. Cle's and our report, um, to indicate what there, if there are any issues complying with those. And to the best of my knowledge, site work, uh, site work at the site has begun, but there have been no sales of units yet. So the entire project is still owned by the developer or the sponsor. Thank you.
Thank you.
Good evening, Mr. Chairman, members of the board. Ron Shimannowitz from the firm of Hutton Shimannowitz here on behalf of the applicant, D.R. Horton. As your consultants stated, uh, we are before you tonight seeking preliminary and final major site plan approval for the clubhouse portion of what we call, uh, Jackson Woods Southeast, uh, which was previously approved, and you're seeing the clubhouse portion for the first time tonight. And as, uh, Mr. Cle and Mr. Peter stated, this is the, the D.R. Horton clubhouse. Uh, with us tonight are, uh, basically three witnesses. Uh, Mark Lescavage from Colliers Engineering is going to present the site plan. Uh, we have William Feinberg from Feinberg Associates as our architect, will show you the renderings and floor plans of the building. And we have Mr. Robert Fettcho, who is a representative of D.R. Horton, who can answer any, uh, operational questions. And with that brief introduction, unless there's any other housekeeping, we would call as our first witness, Mark Lescavage. Got him sworn.
Thank you, sir, for raising your right hand. Do you solemnly swear or affirm that the testimony, information, questions, or comments you're about to present before the board will represent the truth, whole truth, and nothing but the truth?
I do.
Can you kindly give us your full name, spell your last and your affiliation, and then through the chairman, uh, your credentials?
It's Mark Lescavage, that's spelled L-E-S-C-A-V-A-G-E. I'm a senior project manager at Colliers Engineering and Design. I've been practicing civil engineering for twenty-five years. Uh, I've been licensed since nineteen ninety-seven. I've been in front of many planning boards and zoning boards of adjustment throughout New Jersey, including, uh, this board, I believe, three times in the last year.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Mark, before you get rolling, uh, imagine you're going to use some exhibits, so if you want to call out uh, what you're going to refer to first, and we'll mark that as exhibit A-one.
Sure, the, the first exhibit is, is actually one that we didn't submit. It is the preliminary plat exhibit I presented, uh, in the subdivision hearing, but I think it's relevant, uh, uh, to presenting this project. So I would like that, present that as, I guess, A-one.
Yeah, you want to put that up and mark it right on the board with today's date? And just tell us the title and date of that document.
Preliminary plat exhibit. It's dated December fourth, two thousand twenty.
May proceed with your testimony.
Should I put in the other exhibits?
If you wanted to mark them all up in advance, that's easier for you, absolutely. Let's go through them.
I could do that, I guess, as we go.
Okay.
Okay. Okay, I'll, I'll start with the existing conditions and referring to A-one. Uh, the lot in question tonight was created as part of section one of Jackson Woods Southeast subdivision. You can see from the, on the exhibit, it is the large blue lot right in the center of the project. Uh, is now, uh, since the plat has been filed, block forty-one-oh-one, lot twenty-point-four-six-six, and it consists of seven-point-nine-five acres. Uh, in, in general, where it's located within the subdivision, it's adjacent to the traffic circle that was proposed up from Club Boulevard, which enters off of West Freehold Road up into this, to the center part of the project. Uh, and then the, uh, lot actually is on the north side of the circle, and it's adjacent to Avalon Lane to the east or the right on the exhibit, and Brielle Terrace, which is to the left or the west, uh, within the exhibit. That is the existing lot in question. Uh, what we're proposing tonight is the six-thousand-and-eighty-four-square-foot clubhouse building. And with that, I will enter another exhibit, A-two, which is the color rendering of the site landscape plan, and that is dated January eleventh, two thousand twenty-two. As you can see, this is a color rendering of the site landscaping plan that was submitted as part of the application. You can see towards, north is towards the top of the page, you can see Club Bou- Boulevard entering into the circle. And you can see the lot in question is central, uh, to the exhibit. Uh, the front entry drive, you can see, coming across the, uh, tan buil- building, that is the clubhouse building in the center of the, um, center of that lot. Uh, there are two parking areas proposed, one to the west, uh, which is twenty-one spaces along Brielle Terrace. Absolutely. So we have two parking areas being proposed, uh, one along Brielle Terrace, which has twenty-one spaces, and one along Avalon Lane, uh, which has forty spaces, so we had the total of sixty-one parking spaces, which meets the ordinance requirement for a clubhouse. Uh, and we do have four handicap spaces, meeting the ADA requirements, uh, for the building. And the parking currently being proposed, uh, is twenty-three feet off the curb line of both Avalon Lane and Brielle Terrace, or twelve feet off of the lot line at that location. So that is the variance being proposed tonight. Uh, there is, there is a requirement for non-residential zone, uh, to have no parking within the front yard. Uh, so twenty-five feet would be required, uh, so we're deficient, thirteen, uh, twelve feet. I'm sorry, thirteen feet, because we're twelve feet off. So also being proposed, uh, is an amenity package for the property. Uh, the first thing that I would point out, uh, you have Clubhouse Drive, which connects Avalon Lane to Brielle Terrace and goes in the front of our clubhouse building. Uh, there is a green area in between the circle and that drive, and there we are proposing two fountains, um, six-and-a-half-foot high, each one, they're roughly seventy feet long, and we do have, I'll, I'll introduce A-three, which depicts, uh, those fountains. So this is A-three, is the color details of the entry fountain pergola and trash enclosure. So the applicant has spent a lot of time, uh, perfecting this?
You're referring to now A-three, is that? Okay, it's now up on the screen, okay. So we're now synchronized.
I apologize.
Thank you.
Go ahead.
Uh, so the, the applicant, uh, and our team, uh, went around a lot on this, uh, to try to get an exceptional feature that will capture the eye as you come up to the circle. And you can see that it, it is attractively landscaped, uh, both in the front and in back, and, um, six-and-a-half-foot feature with a larger, uh, waterfall in the middle, and then two smaller ones on the side. So there's two of those, uh, within the site plan, which is the first feature. There we go. Then going back to exhibit A-two, the color rendering in the site plan. And then I'll go through the other features. So there is a deck along the clubhouse, i- in, in the rear of the clubhouse, um, which has a, a fire pit, a pergola, has ADA access down to a lower deck, uh, where the pool is located. Uh, there is a pool that has seventeen-hundred-square-foot area. Uh, it has two lap lanes, an ADA lift, and a zero-entry area. Uh, also adjacent to the pool is, is some additional sister shade structures, as you see here, which are also depicted, um, within the exhibits that I have, both here and adjacent to a playground or totlot area, which is to the west of the deck. Also featured, uh, just to the east of, um, the deck area is two pickleball courts. So in, you can see that this is a recreational area just beyond just the clubhouse. Uh, there is also a shade structure associated, uh, with that, with the pickleball courts. Then you'll see just to the east of the pickleball courts is another structure that is the, uh, post office for the development. Uh, and so that's where people throughout the development will be getting their mail. You can see, this was done on purpose, uh, to have all these features very close together. Um, you know, the, the applicant, uh, wanted to make it accessible for everyone, um, and, and make sure that, um, pedestrian-wise, you can get, uh, to all locations through the sidewalk system there. The other feature, uh, that's just to the top of the page is there's seventy-five-by-one-hundred multipurpose, just regular natural turf field area, uh, for whatever the residents might want to do, soccer or any other game that they would like to play. Uh, and we do have details of all of those features. Um, I'll show the next exhibit, A-four. So so this exhibit is the color details of the mailbox shade and pool equipment enclosures. So you can see the shade enclosures will have canvas roof and be open air underneath. And have an area where people, people can go and congregate. Uh, the post office box, see the arrangement, um, is basically just a gabled roof, uh, with some attractive pillars with stone veneer. Um, there's, I believe, six rows of, uh, boxes for people to go in. And I believe there's thirty, um, thirty of these boxes with the ability to have sixteen mailboxes, so that gives you, there's four-hundred-and-sixty-five units, so all of them will be able to house them in this structure. You have a pool enclosure, which will have vinyl fence around it. Um, one of the questions is the, the color of the vinyl fence, which hasn't been chosen yet. Looking at something that'll match the architecture. And so that's pretty much it on the amenities. We are not proposing any signs as part of this application, everything that we proposed previously. Everything that we proposed previously with the subdivision plan is not part of this application. So that, all the features I propose, I would say are accessory structures at this point. In terms of lighting, we created a lighting plan using the same fixtures that we had throughout the subdivision, 12-foot-high decorative colonial fixtures to keep at the rural development theme. And we use the same, I guess it was either a variance or a waiver for maintaining the foot candles on the roadway. So we, we met the average of 0.4 foot candles maintained within the roadway. But there's also another section of the ordinance that requires a minimum of half a foot candle within the roadway. So for that, we're asking for the same relief as we had with the streets within the subdivision. In terms of the landscape plan, referring back to the rendered site plan. Go back to the second exhibit or the first exhibit. Thank you. So in terms of the landscape plan, we have ornamental trees and bushes along Clubhouse Drive. We have our shade trees along both Avalon Lane and Brielle Terrace. We're asking for the same waiver with regard to the 50-foot tree separation within the development. And for the same reasons, we asked for that waiver in the original subdivision plans in certain locations. We needed access through to be able to see, for instance, the clubhouse. When you come to the center drive, wouldn't make sense to completely block that view coming into the clubhouse. Why build a beautiful building that you can't see? But I could say that we met the spirit of the ordinance and we had the same amount of trees that would be required for that 50-foot separation. So that's all I had on the site plan. Believe all the drainage was addressed in the subdivision plans. We're not proposing any major changes to that, just inlets connecting into the existing system. In terms of the relief, so we identified that we need relief from section 244-19I1, which is a parking in the front yard setback, where 25 feet being required, 12. Sure. So we could see this landscaped edge here. So it is the right-of-way line that runs through there along Avalon Lane. That separation between where the parking is, is 12 feet, where technically 25 feet would be required. And that same relief is required along Brielle Terrace. There's 23 feet from the curb, but only 12 feet from the right-of-way. So in terms of, I guess I wasn't qualified as a planner.
I was just gonna jump in. We qualified you as a P E, but if you can give your qualifications as a professional planner.
Yes, I've been reviewing zoning ordinances and providing planning testimony since 1998. I've been a licensed planner in the state of New Jersey. Obviously, I'm qualified as an engineer first, so planning is, I don't have specific education in planning, but I've been practicing it for over 20 years.
And your license is in full force and effect in New Jersey, is that correct?
Yes, it is.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. But please proceed with your planning justification for the variance.
Absolutely. So specifically for the variance that we're seeking tonight, we would not call this a C1 hardship variance, as Mr. Peters had in his report. It would really be a C2. And the burden of proof on that end is that the benefits of the deviation from the zoning ordinance would outweigh the detriments, that there is no substantial impairment to the public good or the zone plan. In this case, I think the deviation specific to especially the Avalon Lane. And so when I was talking about the site plan, at this location, we had mentioned that the pickleball courts specifically wanted to be very close to where the pool deck was and where the clubhouse and the upper deck were. And we also had the post office. In the post office, we went through a series of iterations with the post office. They approved it here. This was the location that they wanted it. And because of that, we have the constraint of if we were to move this back 13 feet, we would have a problem with that whole, that whole arrangement of where the post office is. We would end up having to move the pickleball court towards the north end of the property. Now, the problem with that is once you put the pickleball courts up here, when we talked to the applicant, we got very specific with the site plan. Now, the footprint that we had and the, and the parking lots are the same as what we showed in the original subdivision application, understood that we didn't apply for a site plan approval at that time, but that, that was the same arrangement. But if you look at our subdivision plan. You can see here is where we originally had the pickleball courts. And the problem with that is that you have a row of houses where that, those pickleball courts would be right in the backyard of those folks. So the applicant, that was the other reason, not only just the access, but wanted to make sure that we didn't have the pickleball courts towards those backyards, we're just at the top of the page on this exhibit. So we thought it was a better planning tool to keep that setback that we have and keep that arrangement close. And we believe that advances some of the purposes of zoning, specifically to provide adequate light, air and open space, to allow those uses to exist at that location, also provide, promote a more desirable visual environment, which is another purposes, one of the purposes of zoning. It's also desirable to keep the pickleball area closer to the clubhouse so that it can be screened and incorporated in the overall landscaping plans. You can see there's a big package around that. And the, you know, the only folks that it would affect at this point would be across the street. Also to encourage planned unit developments, which incorporate the best features of design and layout of residential, commercial, industrial and recreational development to a particular site. So the parking setback deviation is actually not in the PM U R D zoning requirements. This is a standard for a non-residential development. So most of the time, that's applied to a commercial lot that exists, that has existing neighbors, that they're coming in and must meet that setback requirement. Since this is a planned residential unit development, location of the parking for the clubhouse, which actually serves this community, should have that flexibility of design to be convenient for the residents. Since the clubhouse is centrally located along the two roads, the front setback is therefore applied to the entire frontage. Because what we're dealing with is if this was in technically a side yard, this would not be a variance. So from that standpoint, we believe it does advance some of the purposes of zoning. If we had to comply with it, we would also have to put an additional pavement, have additional soil disturbance. So from that standpoint, we would also say this would advance the more efficient use of land, is another purpose of zoning. So with the site design features described, we believe that the benefits outweigh the detriments of this variance. In terms of the negative criteria, as previously stated, the clubhouse parking setback is not in the PM U R D requirements, therefore the setback for parking on this use was not envisioned in the zoning ordinance for this type of element. So based on these observations, we believe that the variance can be granted without a substantial detriment to zone plan or the zoning ordinance. So that's all I have on the variance.
That, that's fine if you want to turn your attention to the review letters.
Yeah, absolutely.
Before you do, let's explore this variance a little bit. And Mr. Peters, I'd like you to weigh in on this.
As it relates to the setback along the right-of-way, a couple of things from a practical perspective. If this, if all of these roads were owned by a homeowner association, it wouldn't need a variance. It would be a design standard. So from a practical planning perspective, it's a line on a drawing. So from a physical planning perspective, we normally want 12 to 18 feet, sort of as a safety barrier between the curb and the parking area, which they have here. However, because of the way the project was laid out, there's a line on the drawing. So Mr. LaScavitch gave planning testimony, which I believe supports the request. I always, I like to get back to the physical perspective. Is there a negative impact? Is it unsafe to have it the way they have it on the plan? And I don't think so. Mr. LaScavitch, there's also landscaping provided in between the areas where the parking lot is closest to the right-of-way. You have landscaping proposed in those areas as well, correct?
That's correct.
So there's also a slim, but a buffer in between the drive aisles and the edge of the parking space. So unbalanced, we don't take any exception to the relief requested. If the board wanted additional space for a particular reason, understand, and it's not going to make the record well, but as this is sort of a rounded frontage lot, if we move things in from the left and right side of the project, we have to move things back to get them to fit. This appears to be a reasonable use of the land for the, for the clubhouse. I would take note that the developer brought this forward. They're the ones who are selling this to residents. So if, quite frankly, while I don't want to speak for the developer, if they thought it wasn't going to work, they'd make it work. I've had an opportunity in my career to be in a number of residential homeowner association communities. This does not appear to be five pounds in a two-pound sack. I would invite debate from the board members on whether or not they feel that this is sufficient, but from not only a, a planning perspective, I think Mr. LaScavitch has given testimony necessary for the board to grant the relief. I think from a, a physical planning perspective out in the field, I think it meets the intent of our land use ordinance as it relates to safety.
So in your professional opinion, this meets the criteria of a C2 variance?
Yes.
The headlights? Yes.
Right there.
Right there. I, I thought I did.
So I have a question for you with regards to your post office. You have 468 mailboxes, is that right?
465.
65. So I envision people coming home from work and them coming in and stopping at the post office to pick up their, their mail on their way home. And, you know, during the hours of, let's say, 5 to 6:30 or so. And I think there's going to be a lot of congestion of, and something has to be done with those parking spots in front of the post office. If you have an event going on in the clubhouse, if you have people at the pool playing pickleball, a whole thing, and then you have people coming in to pick up their mail as well. And now I know that, you know, it's a planned unit development and encouraging people to walk and so forth to this, but I just see a lot of congestion in front of the post office during that evening rush when people are coming home and want to pick up their mail. So in my opinion, I think the parking spots in front of that should be marked, reserved for 10-minute parking for mail pickup only and excluded from, you know, regular parking. That thought as well.
Mr. Chairman?
Yes, sir.
I'd like to ask, Mr. LaScavitch, the, the two accessible spots that are located closest to the post office, could they be flipped to the other side of the curb island, a little further away? I suspect the number of accessible folks compared to the 465 would be fewer, and I think they'd only have to go another 18 feet. And then we'd have three additional parking spaces that would be in close access or proximity to the post office. Would that be a reasonable alternative?
We have no problem with that.
Do you see my point?
Absolutely. We, we actually talked about, when we initially started talking about the post office, with the post office was having possibly two spots. But from their experience, they, they thought one would work here even. Now, we did also propose a spot for the mail person to park. So we do, do have that on the site plan as well.
And you have a site designated for the mail truck or anything for when he comes?
Yes, so he would be right.
That's that gray area?
Yeah, okay.
Anyone else? Ms. Campbell?
So we do have, not to interrupt you, I'm sorry, but we do have an ar- ar- contact who would be better suited to answer your question on that.
Mr. Chairman, just a quick question, and it may be a silly one, you may have gone over this already. The mail service is, is, how do folks that live here get their mail?
They would be going to this location.
Every day?
Yes.
That makes absolutely no sense. And I'll tell you why. In plan, in, in these types of communities that I've seen, and I'm sure you have a model that you can, you could fix this, there would be, for example, nice decorative brick, periodic, maybe there's, maybe one, two, three, maybe six, what have you, for folks that have their own mailbox throughout the development. The idea that folks are going to go right direct, go to a clubhouse every single day, it's going to drive your clients mad, first of all, I think. My opinion, actually, I should just say, that's my opinion. But it's incredibly inconvenient if the, if there's no mail going through the route or going. But it's incredibly inconvenient if the if there's no mail going through the route or going through the community, sharing an opinion with you. You'll have people driving into that clubhouse. And and I'm sorry to pick up on, I didn't think that that's actually what you're thinking about from a planning standpoint. For example, in other where there's density bonuses or what have you, where you congest, your housing is tight, there are periodic, like, for example, if there's a little roundabouts where there's a cluster of homes, they would have their own mailbox, like that would be for that, say, 10 units. And then there would be another development, I'm thinking frankly, my own development. There's a very attractive aesthetically pleasing brick or may maybe whatever the elements are that that tie to the design. And you know exactly what I'm talking about, I'm sure. Why aren't you doing that? Because you know what I'm talking.
We 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 do, and we can answer that question with the chair's permission. It'll take probably 15 seconds. We could have Mr. Bavino come up and be sworn. He worked directly with the postmaster, and he has the answer to the the question that's been raised.
Thank you.
So if we got Mr. Bavino sworn, yeah.
Mr. Bavino, thank for raising your right hand. You solemnly swear or affirm that the testimony, information, questions, or comments you're about to present before the board represent the truth, all truth, and nothing but the truth.
I do.
Can you kindly give us your full name, spell your last, and your affiliation to the app?
Thomas P. Bavino, B as in boy, O V as in Victor, I N O. And I work for the property owner and the developer who will be selling the lots to D R Horton. Okay, so the answer to your question, Mr. Wall, believe me, I spent numerous visits with the Jackson postmaster. And for a host of reasons, he was very reluctant to do what you suggest. As the best I could do was pot, I mean, he really wanted a central location. It has to do with labor, convenience, efficiencies. He made a whole list of this is where the postal service is taking us. I tried to even get him to split two sides of the community. So to have two of those, one on the left side, one on the right, so at least it alleviated, excuse me, split the community in two. But this was a trend that he was pretty adamant about telling us in terms of his approval, his sign off, this is what he wanted. Now, I'm certainly welcome if you want, and I want to talk to him again, but I I think this is direction.
I would just say, you know, most folks are aware that the postal service is is in a bit of a death spiral unless they figure that out, right? With pension costs and benefit costs and things like that. But I think they're making their problem your problem.
I I agree. I I think that he's dictating to you what makes it easier for him and more efficient for him and not taking into account how the residents are.
Right.
Having dock.
Now, I should point out for parcel delivery, that that will go to the door, to the door of each of the units, right? For all the Amazon type deliveries, whether 2P S, postal, et cetera. But for Daily Mail, this is what he, and he told us it had to be covered for weather, so their workers weren't stuck in the rain, so to speak. Now, he, we, in in terms of in large apartment communities, they usually have a centralized location. The issue that complicates it is they walk, right? They're in the building, they can walk to the central location. Here, they're in vehicles, so.
I just think you're going to have massive congestion there during those magic hours in the evening.
I think what we discussed was, we start with this, and if we have to split it into two, maybe we split it into two. But I don't know that I'm going to get the post service's approval without without ending up in something that looks like that. So again, I'm 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 certainly welcome to have Mr. Wall and I revisit this with the with the post.
Maybe the post office wants to come here and talk guns.
But that, yeah, that's my answer. I mean, that's.
I just to thank you, just a quick question for the attorney. Is this akin to a a the a bus stop at a development where they're where they would? I mean, maybe it's not a fair analogy, but within their world, they will, they they would set up the appropriate bus stops in the development within reason. And in this case, they would set up appropriate mail delivery service within reason. And then the question is, is this considered within reason? I just find it, because I think it blows up your parking is.
Right.
Right, that's why I was sorry, you know.
So so it's interesting. I'm along those same lines, I'll ask the applicant. So I think the board, right, as a preface, the board could take note that having a specific discussion over where post office delivery, regular mail is not often, doesn't often occur here. This applicant, at some level, for whatever reasons, has gone further than many in making this determination already. But the question becomes, what happens if the board simply doesn't like this and says, no, you got to split it up or you have to do that? Do you go back to the post office and then have to come back for an amendment?
Has to be worked out somewhere or another. I mean, we, we, you know, it's hard for us to serve two masters, you know? We 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 go to the postmaster and ask him the question, and he, we got the answer. We understand the board's concerns. But I I would like to add one more thing to the record. If you could have Mr. Fetscho sworn in, he has one more piece of the puzzle to add, so the board's fully informed on on this issue. So we could have Mr. Fetscho sworn.
Mr. Fetscho, thank you for raising your right hand. You solemnly swear or affirm that the testimony, information, questions, or comments you're about to present before the board represent the truth, all truth, and nothing but the truth.
I do.
Can you kindly give us your full name, spell your last, and your affiliation to the applicant?
Robert Fetscho, spelled F E C S O, I'm a vice president with D R Horton. I've been developing in the state of New Jersey the last 30 years. I've probably constructed over 25,000 units so far. What happened in 2016, it came down as a federal mandate that there was no more, even on my existing communities, even on my existing communities, we, on single families, townhouses, and apartments, everything had to be centralized. They sent out details from the government, the US Postal Service, here's how big it has to be. Then you had to go to the local postmaster and have them at, you asked them where they wanted to put it on the site. Even on my single families, big lots, singles, they're all centralized now. There's no more curbs pickup for any new developments and not even existing developments. Your planner, your engineer will know this as well. You can't have curbside pickup anywhere. So we got to pick a location, serve the local postmaster, and that's just the area we picked. I wanted to pick it up like Mr. Bavino testified and break it up on two sides of the community, put some in the back. Then the postmaster came back here locally and said, no, we want it one centralized location. That's why what we do, we we did. And we also inside the clubhouse, which you'll see later when when Mr. Feinberg gets up for large packages, in case there's not enough room, we have a postal pickup inside of there for for larger deliveries.
I thought you just, sorry, sir, can't help myself, but there was just testimony that the larger deliveries, Amazon and stuff, would go to this.
Yeah, I'm saying, but if there is a flowover, we have an area, people aren't home, people go on vacation, they can be delivered inside the clubhouse. But you don't want during Christmas or during a holiday season where no one's around. The package, it's a townhouse community. You can't have them all stacked up there. So we have an alternative to put them inside the clubhouse as well, thinking ahead, because we have this happening in some of our other communities.
Okay.
Mr. Chairman?
Yes.
Mr. Fetscho, you say that we've we've gone, the the post office has gone this way. Can you describe some of the projects that you have that have utilized this and and your real world experiences, both positive and negative? I've been to one of your projects down in Delaware. It's a little smaller than this. They have it, it's brand new, I've seen it. I said to the people, my friends who bought there, I said, I've been getting my mail delivered to my front door for 58 years. And they're like, just not that big a deal, because they knew it when they bought it.
Yes.
So I guess, help the board members understand the idea. It's obviously far enough, the post office isn't going to deliver our mail to our front door anymore, like the like the milkman doesn't anymore. But can you explain some of the, what happens if it's a problem? What 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 positives of negatives have you seen in implementing this that would help the board understand it and grasp the idea?
Well, on this type of development, I don't think it would be a problem. But the problems I've seen with it, where we don't have a big clubhouse area, open space area, where I probably put these gang boxes along the road. So then you have people like between units or between townhouse buildings, like we look at, I don't have my location pointer, like between the buildings. It make us put them here a lot of times between the buildings, and people all gang up there along the roadway trying to get the mail. And the post, and also the postman, that makes me put a big concrete pad here, take, and then you can't put the transformers in. It's a real issue. So here we have the benefit to have this open space to put it in this area with the parking areas.
So people aren't along the the main roadway?
Yeah.
The fire and emergency access route and get them off of that by putting them into the community area, so to speak.
Because what it does is just jam up the roads, because they all line up on the road, pick up the mail. Like you said, they're going to come home all at the same time. So now they're blocking people from getting in the driveway. That's what I see the detriment of doing this. I like to be delivered right to my house. That's what I want to do. It's a lot less expensive. I put a little mailbox for $100 in front of everyone's house to build a structure like I'm building here. But I've, you're going to do it, you might as well do it nice. That's why I have it covered, that's why it's lit, that's why you have stone pillars. So it blends in, all the mailboxes are black gunmetal, a dark color like that, they're got cheap aluminum in it, and it's going to hit out. These are, I mean, it's a really nice, we have some difference of.
So generally speaking, the residents understand that at some point in time?
We have right up front. It's also in the age, sorry, Mr. Peter, it's also disclosed to men at point of sale. It's not going to be curbside pickup, it's going to be a gang mailbox mail delivery system.
And and I guess the reason, I apologize.
I understand with the them knowing upfront, that's part of the deal when they sign up, that's all well and good. I still have, think you have a situation between the people picking up all their mail. You're going, you're going to have a mess there.
Well, I have another community down in Barnegat Township, which is a similar size, similar sized clubhouse. The clubhouse is bigger, it's 9,000 square foot for 400 units. And I have, and we don't have that type of problem. I understand, I understand concern, and we just don't, it's just, we're not having that issue. I have the issue when I have it up and down the roadways, if they're even, if the postmaster allow that, that's where I see the issue.
Have you ever built one of your developments with this type of setup?
Yes.
And and it works?
It worked.
Postmortem on the.
It worked. What doesn't work is what I described along the roadways, that's that's been giving us problems.
Now, what I would like to add for the record is, you know, people are going to drive by. If it's if it's packed, they're just going to keep driving, right? And you you're going to start to find a rhythm where people work odd hours, and they're going to go when no one's there. I mean, our generation was spoiled to get the mail every single day. You have people working home more now. So again, to try and move forward, I think, I think Mark, I think we should, we have section one approved of 186 homes. So we're asking the board to consider, we can certainly talk to the postmaster, but if they're.
Pretty firm.
Thank you. I was, yeah, if they're they're not negotiable.
Yeah.
Can we at least try the 186 lots, see how it performs, see how human behavior sort of adapts? And it may not be as bad. It's not like there's a dinner bell and everybody's going there at the same time to pick up their mail. And then let's see what happens if we have to split it into two. I don't think you're.
I'm agreeable to that. Let's see how it worked. If it doesn't work at the first section, we can go back to the postmaster, and his delivery people know it's not working as well. I'd put another one in and then in section two. I'm not objecting to that, I'm just trying to satisfy everyone, the board, and also what's required by the federal government and the US Postal Office system.
So how many spots are you going to designate for mail pickup and short term parking only?
Well, we're going to have the one for the mail truck, and I can leave five, six, which is a determination, it's a guess at this point. How many you want me to have? You tell me, I'll.
Well, it is a guess, you know.
Yeah.
And it's a hard guess with 560 or 465 mailboxes. So how many people are going to come simultaneously to?
I can't, Mr. Chairman, I I can't give you that number. I know at the active adult community I referenced is my Sea Crest Pines in Barnegat, everyone's home. Most people are home, and I don't have a problem there. I don't think I'm going to have a problem here, but let's revisit it. If we have a problem, I'm going on the record, and Mr. Bavino went on the record, we'll go back and petition as if we needed a second one, and it's phase two. And we'll find some open space in the later section to have another group area to put it, a gang area to put it. But it's going to be gang, there's nothing I can do about that.
Yes.
Excuse me?
These subcontractors deliver mail, so I don't give them any order or free. That solves all the problems, you said 465 minutes, right?
Yes.
Eight hours in a day, it's 58 minutes. One per minute per hour. Like suggested, divorce it, half on one side, half on other. That is men. You can't look me in the eyes and tell me I'm wrong. I understand you've got the experience of building companies. My suggestion to you, sir, is divorce it and have. You're on a land use board, post office, lots of the post office. I understand what they want. Like if you got, I'm not getting you to do that. So make this work so that it's not a cumbersome thing, so that you don't have to wait for money to come back later and sort this out. Our select land, let's step forward and take proactive steps.
Excuse me, go ahead, I never talked about you.
Let's take a proactive step and split it in half to half.
That's what I wanted to do in the first place.
Yeah, I was going to say.
We both did.
Yeah.
Mr. Postmaster, thank you very much for your suggestion. However, the land use board wants that. They're the ones that are reviewing it, running guarantees, providing the hearing. That's the way it goes.
I understand.
Can we get a letter? Can we get a letter from the planning board that we can bring to the post?
I have no problem with it, as long as you will give me a letter, I have one of your professionals give me a letter saying that I could take that back and say, this is what I had to do to get the approval. This is what they want, they will not approve just one gang system. If I can get from your attorney, whoever, so Mr. Bavino could go back to him and say, we tried, we can't do this. It calls for a gang, but it doesn't say anywhere in this what was mandated to us, it only had to be one, I need to split it. Is that your desire to have it split? I'll do that.
Okay. Mr. Bavino, you had a comment.
No, that was, he addressed it.
Okay.
We just want to work together with the planning board.
Ms. Campbell, I think the problem that I see is the congestion, not not necessarily.
People adjust to the situation as it is. And they they don't, they're not as tied to the mails as people of our generation. Because the mail is not what it used to be. There's not, there's more junk than there.
I agree, I don't check my mail every day. I get complaints I don't empty the box enough.
I think I have a compromise that hopefully will satisfy this gentleman. Maybe we build half of the bank. I don't think you want us to waste the money on the whole thing, have to come back later and split it in two. Can we build half now, 186 lots? We're coming back to the planning board in a year for the remaining.
Tom, just so the record's clear, when you say build half, build half of what?
Build half of the required post office that's shown on the plan. See how it works. We're going to come back here past 186 lots, we will have real live data as to what's going on there. And then we can either decide, and I say we, but it's your decision, to either continue. to either continue finishing building the second half of it on that side, splitting it in two, or even as Mr. Fettio, I don't want to speak to you, but there's another space in the community for a third bank. We'll know more information and it'll be based on real human behavior. Does anybody object to that idea?
Mordi, I have something. I agree with what the board. Anyone else?
Thank you.
So just to be clear, so we're going to build fifteen of the units. We have thirty times sixteen, so we're going to do fifteen times sixteen.
I've lost everything you said.
So there's thirty of these units. Each one of these units holds sixteen boxes. So instead, we're going to build fifteen of those boxes.
Your client said he's going to provide half or one hundred and eighty-six. That arithmetic is your guy's problem, not the board's.
Matt solves all problems.
But what I'm saying is the fifteen would be more than one hundred and eighty-six.
Okay.
Well, so all right. Thirty total is proposed. Build fifteen of them. Solves the problem. Yeah.
That's Matt.
Yeah. Yep.
Mr. Chairman? Just, just, just real quick, as far as giving the applicant something that he can go back to the postmaster with, should the board, you know, grant the application? Maybe the resolution, you have a finding of that we struggled with this and this is what we came up with. So at least they have something to go back to the postmaster with.
We would welcome that. That would help us.
I would like that. I would like to go back sooner or later to resolve this issue. I don't want to leave it open. That's fine. Okay. Makes sense.
Good.
And it's exactly what happened.
Your testimony? More witnesses?
What we do, I just want to make sure, Mark, is there anything else on the review letters that you want to address or are we in a will comply status? Is there anything that you need to comment on in the two review?
No, we would agree to both letters. I think we gave the testimony on the variances and the waivers. And the only other thing, we'll agree to the charging stations if we need to. So we'll add that to the plan.
Okay. All right. Before you bring up, Mr. Please?
Return the charging stations as well as some of the feasibility study.
Feasibility for the solar.
Okay, before you bring up your next witness, let's take five minute break. We've been going since seven thirty.
Nine ten.
Mr. Chairman, our next witness is our architect, Mr. Bill Feinberg, if we can have him sworn.
Mr. Feinberg, thank you for raising your hand. Do you sound me swear or affirm that testimony, information, questions, comments? You're about to present before the board, represent the truth, hold truth and nothing but the truth.
I do.
Can you kindly give us your full name, spell your last and through the chairman, your credentials?
Okay, my name is William Feinberg, F.E.I.N.B.E.R.G. My address is ten ten Haddonfield Berlin Road in Voorhees, New Jersey. I'm a licensed architect in the state of New Jersey since nineteen ninety-two. Received my architectural degree from Drexel University. I've given testimony before boards on similar projects throughout the state of New Jersey, over a hundred and fifty different municipalities. And I think back in the early nineties, I was before this board. Thank you very much.
Bill, I'm going to turn it over to you. If there are exhibits you're going to utilize, we're starting with exhibit A five. If you could take us through the architectural proposal.
Okay, so on the easel is exhibit A five on the top. It is the floor plan for the clubhouse. It's dated November twentieth, two thousand and twenty. It represents the floor plan that was shown on the engineer's plan. And the front of the clubhouse is located at the bottom of this exhibit. You come through the front doors. You do have an office for a management office, about two hundred square feet. We also have a package room. I know there's been extensive discussions earlier regarding the post office. We do have a big lounge area that's separated by a fireplace, a kind of a quiet lounge area towards the front of the clubhouse and a more active with televisions, kind of set up like a sports bar, but it's not a bar. We also have a twelve hundred square foot fitness center that's on the, on the easterly side of the building. We also have located mechanical sprinkler rooms out the back of the clubhouse facing the pool. We have a pergola with a fire pit. We also have a game room, which is located at the front of the clubhouse, about four hundred square feet. We have accessible bathrooms that are for both the use of the clubhouse and for the use of the pool. There, the engineer's plan showed a sidewalk. They came into a side entry and a hallway that leads you back to the bathrooms. And then we have about a six hundred square foot multipurpose room facing out to the pool area. Why don't we go to the next exhibit? So A six is the front and rear elevation of the clubhouse. That's dated December eighth, twenty twenty-one. The lower exhibit represents the clubhouse front as you, as you come up through the circle and approach the front of the clubhouse. The clubhouse is about twenty-nine feet, six inches tall to the highest point of the roof, which is this point right here. The front of the clubhouse and part of the side of the clubhouse, which I'll demonstrate in a minute, has a standing seam metal roof. We do have vinyl board and battened siding. There's a foot, fourteen foot high ceiling. So we have large windows on the front, large glass doors. We have transom windows on top of the front entrance and the rooms inside. The elevation at the top is the rear elevation. So this would be facing out towards the pool. Again, what we have located on the rear is a pergola. There's a pair of doors that bring you out from inside the clubhouse out to this area and then down into the pool, pool area. Why don't we go to the next exhibit? Which should be A seven. So on the screen, the lower part of that exhibit is the right side elevation, which will be facing out to the pickleball courts. As you can see, we've continued the materials from the front. Elevation with a cultured stone. We also have the vertical board and battened siding. And then our main roof area is the area that is over top of the fitness center and the great room. And the opposite side, this is the door that brings you in from the pool, which is out back and into the bathroom area. We've also continued the same materials around the left side elevation. Actually, that represents everything that we've submitted to the board, including these color renderings for this evening's testimony.
Bill, there's an earlier question on solar. Is the applicant in a position to comment on what might happen solar wise?
Yeah, so we go back to the floor plan. Go back to exhibits. The front of our building faces south. So the preference would be not to have solar panels in the front of the building. We do have two large roof areas that are split down the middle, essentially a left half and a right half. The east to west is almost directly across. We could look at the potential for adding solar to that roof or have it solar ready so that our, we'd have conduits up to the roof back to our electric panels.
Thank you.
Ms. Campbell?
Have, is there, well, before we're going to be too precise to whether the side of the building actually leads to the clubhouse to all of the. Living in an environment where I, I'm functioning with this type of a clubhouse, would we consider perhaps having two exterior or the one exterior bathroom? Because getting people walking through that hallway wet, pink and sliding slippery, but that, but that to that side view.
That would be right here on this, right here on this exhibit on the board. We have not looked at adding bathrooms because of. Yeah, right here.
Just adding doorway into one, maybe adding one bathroom exterior you thought? Because that's what it dangers walking into those, into that hallway.
Well, we can go back to the floor plan. Our experience is that we've isolated this hallway. We obviously want to give access to anybody that's using the club room. And then coming into the pool, it's probably about ten foot distance into this area right here. We could look at doing something different with the change in flooring materials. So instead of running carpet through that area, running a slip resistant tile would probably be the best way to go.
That's going to be an issue with children.
Right. We can look at that as, as a solution. You're welcome.
Anyone? Yes, Mr. Chairman.
Yeah, I see there's no, there's nothing there for cooking or anything. So you don't anticipate having a, if somebody wants to have something with food, they got to bring a caterer.
That's correct. If you go back to the floor plan, we do have a sink located here. There's a dishwasher under this counter and a refrigerator, but we're not allowing any cooking. Has to be prepared food and it has to be just, you can, you know, bring it warm, you know, to the clubhouse. We prefer not to have any weight cooking in there.
So that would be in case somebody wanted to have a covered dish or something and people, they just bring stuff in, warm it up.
That's correct. But we're not providing any stove top, any microwaves, none of that.
Anyone else?
Chairman?
Yes.
Maybe from Mr. Scavage, but the pool equipment, maintenance, chemicals, is there any provisions for storage?
I believe there's an enclosure shown on the site plan. Mark, isn't that the vinyl fenced enclosure?
Yes.
And I think that's located, what, to the west of the pool.
It's, it's, it's between the clubhouse and the tight lot? I'm looking, it looks like it could be some type of enclosure. It's not really labeled, but it's between the clubhouse and.
Yes.
Yeah.
Yes.
On the mechanicals are in there also?
For the pool equipment, yes. And chemical storage would be there also. It'd be in a locked cabinet. It would be in the same location.
Anyone? Okay.
Thank you.
No further witnesses, Mr. Chairman.
All right. Anyone from the public that wishes to comment about this application? Please step up to the microphone.
Sir, thank you for raising your right hand. Do you sound me swear or affirm that testimony, information, questions or comments you're about to present before the board, represent the truth, hold truth and nothing but the truth?
I do.
Can you kindly give us your full name, spell your last and your address, please?
Ed Bannon, B.A.N.N.O.N., twenty-two Abercrombie Court, Jackson.
Mr. Chair?
I do have a problem with where they locate the game room down in the lower left corner to their office. There's a lot of noise generated in those game rooms. I come from one of these communities. And to have that kind of noise volume that comes out of a pool room that close to the office that's right in the middle of the bottom there, I think that would be disturbing to the people working at office. Thank you.
Anyone else? Anyone else go forward? All favor?
Hi.
All right. Okay. Any other questions? Comments, concerns?
Quick question about the food situation. I realize you don't want a full service kitchen there. Or is it a thought that you might do, say, lunch trucks on premises during certain hours of the day when people might want to eat as opposed to being their own? Because I've seen that happen before. Is that a thought or is that a not a thought?
Of food trucks?
Food trucks to show up at say eleven o'clock to two o'clock so people can get food, eat it on premises, but it's not cooked on premises?
The only food trucks that would appear on this property would be during construction. So we would stipulate that there'd be no food trucks during the occupancy that would serve the residents. So the answer is no. There'd be no food trucks.
I don't have a problem with food trucks being there. What it means is that you're not cooking on premises. So you don't have to worry about all the details of storage, cleanliness and all that. It's a service, not a bad thing.
We understand. At this point, we're not proposing any food trucks or any cooking on premises.
May I ask you, just to follow, remind me, I apologize. Are you transferring Title thirty-nine rights to main roads, to the municipality or the HOA government? I don't remember. I apologize.
The answer is yes. They're private roads and we will consent to Title thirty-nine jurisdiction.
Okay.
Okay. Anyone else? No? Okay. Any closing comments?
No, Mr. Chairman. We think there's going to be a beautiful amenity for the, for the community and we would urge the board to grant preliminary final site plan approval as well as the variances and waivers that were discussed.
Anyone?
Mr. Dolan?
Yes.
Dr. Campbell?
Yes.
Mr. Riker?
Yes.
Mr. Bernstein?
Yes.
Mr. Herman?
Yes.
Mr. Wall?
Yes.
Mr. Fleming?
Yes.
Mr. Herring?
Yes.
Mr. Hudek?
Yes. Congratulations.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay. Lastly, we have. Okay. Lastly, we have block seventy-three oh nine, blocks twelve and thirteen, Jackson Project LLC.
Good evening, Mr. Chairman, members of the board, Salvatore Alferian, on behalf of the applicant.
Hi. Just have our professionals lead off.
Sorry.
Go ahead, Mr. Please.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. This is an application carried from December twentieth. It involves an eleven thousand three hundred square foot office building. There's a forty-seven hundred first floor. There's a 4,700 first floor, 3,600 second floor. There's also a 3,000 rooftop terrace area and a 503, 503 square foot bulkhead. I'm not really exactly sure what a bulkhead is. So it's testimony from the applicant on the specifics of that. There is still the variance really required for division on the area as well as lock depth. Front setback to the building's balcony, 60 feet required and 37 feet provided. And also a height variance. The height limits can be exceeded by four feet for power pits and elevator mechanicals and the act is proposing a six feet, six foot in excess of that height requirement. There's also a property line setback, 10 feet required, 20 feet, 20 feet required, 10 feet provided for the residential parking area setback. That's testimony from the applicant, yes, with revised plans. And that's all at this point.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Our office has a report dated February 22nd of this year. It appears that the architect's plans and the engineer's plans may not match. We should get on the record clearly what is being proposed with the application. There was a turning vehicle plan shown, what appears to be a trash truck. We'd like them to provide one that indicates a fire truck. We'd ask the applicant to provide testimony regarding the revisions and compliance with two professionals' reports. And that's it for now, thank you.
Thank you. Good evening.
Good evening. As the board professionals indicated, we were here in December. At that meeting, there was a good discussion about many of the issues that are involved in this project, including solar, the architectural design, EV parking spaces, the parking under the building, et cetera. We've attempted to address all of those comments through revised engineering and architectural plans. Graham McFarland was our engineer and planner of testimony, witness at the last meeting, and he's here again this evening.
So thank you, Mr. Chairman, Mr. McFarland. You sound as we're affirm testimony, information, questions or comments you're about to present before the board represent the truth, all truth and nothing but the truth.
I do.
You've been previously sworn and qualified as both a engineer and planner, correct?
Yes.
And Graham, we, Sean, I have us leaving off at Exhibit A8 at the last hearing. Which exhibit are you going to be referring to so you could summarize the plan revisions that were made?
Well, I had, I had sent in new exhibits. I had started them at A6, so maybe we need to just renumber those. Anthony, if you can pull up the second set you got, which started with A6, which I guess is now going to be changed. I guess I must have lost a couple in, in submission here.
Did you pre-mark them?
I did. So that's the revised site plan, which I had, I had identified in, as A6 in the package that we sent to the board for presentation tonight.
Revision date?
That's the site plan revised February 4th of 2022.
So that would be A9 now.
That's going to change A9, okay. So that's the revised site plan that shows the changes we made to the plan. The changes we made generally involve reworking the parking on the left side of the building to account for the building columns that are required for the overhang. Also to address Mr. Peters' concerns about depth of the parking stalls up against the building. If the board recalls, we had some discussion about that at the last meeting. We've added, there's a, there's a detail over here on the left side of this exhibit. We've added bollards at the end of those parking stalls. And those parking stalls are now an overall depth of 19 feet less the bollards. So the, so the space itself is, it's actually like 18 feet, 4 inches total depth of the parking space, which satisfies ordinance requirement for, for 18 feet. We've also revised the layout of the parking stalls in the back part of, of the building. The handicap spaces were moved to the back. And we've also added bollards along the curb line in the back to address the concern of vehicles that may overhang that, that, that curb line. So the bollards allow for full width of that sidewalk to be utilized without the vehicle overhanging onto that sidewalk. There are two safety islands in the back of the building, one on the left side, one at the right side, right side of the building. We were able to get those both to be nine feet, where 10 feet is required by your ordinance. I believe we originally had them as six feet when we first came with the application. So I believe that's a very, very de minimis waiver request to have those safety islands nine feet instead of, instead of 10 feet. And we've also added a loading space, loading and delivery space for, for deliveries that will be made, that were made to the office. As to the floor area of the building, Mr. Peters pointed out a slight discrepancy in the tabulation of the floor areas. And as we, as we sit here tonight, I believe that the final numbers in accordance with, with ordinance requirements are 4,688 GFA on the first floor, 5,948 GFA on the second floor, for a total of 10,636 square feet of gross floor area. That is calculated in accordance with your ordinance where it's interior space and it excludes walls. When civil engineers, when we calculate floor space, we typically just take the exteriors of the building, use those numbers when we, we prepare site plans in many instances. But your ordinance is very specific that it identifies gross floor area. It defines it as interior space excluding areas of walls. So the computation is the 10,636 square feet gross floor area in accordance with Jackson ordinance. And we also have 2,777 square feet of the rooftop amenity. And while I'm talking about that, Anthony, maybe you can just go to, go to A11 for me real quick and I guess we'll renumber that one also.
So A11 will be A10? Yes.
Want that to be A10 now? Let's keep it order there. Okay, so then what we're going to refer to A10, A10 is a roof plan prepared by, prepared by the architect. Based upon discussion from the board at the last meeting, the board recalls, this was the application where we're proposing this, this outdoor space, rooftop space to be utilized by, by the tenants. This plan shows that the front part of the building would be available for that rooftop terrace, for that outdoor amenities space. That total square footage is about 2,777 square feet. The plan also shows areas, areas reserved for, for equipment and then areas reserved for solar panels on the, on the back right side of the building. I'm, I'm sure the board recalls that we did get some, some testimony from a neighbor who lived on the site immediately to the, to the north. He had concerns about proximity of the patrons that would be utilizing the rooftop terraces or occupying that particular area. So we took that into consideration. And again, this plan shows the limitation which is proposed to basically have the front portion of the building available for, for that outdoor, for that outdoor use. And maybe we'll just go through the other exhibits real quick. So Anthony, if you can go to A7 and then we'll renumber that one. A7 is the revised landscape plan that was submitted with the, with the package, the same data as a site plan, February 4th revised. This plan shows the landscaping that's proposed along both, both property lines. We also do have enhanced treatment at the front of, front of the, front of the building. And then this plan also shows some additional buffering proposed. Mr. Peters and I had a nice discussion about the ordinance requirements for, for buffering at one of our, our last meetings. And he, you know, elaborated the ordinance requirement and the whole procedure for that, for that buffering, which would certainly be adhered to in this application. Basically, where an applicant proposes buffering, there's a process where the town to forester has to review that, that particular landscaping. And if there are areas where certain trees are dead or diseased or not healthy and they have to be supplemented, the applicant is bound to upgrade those in accordance with, with your ordinance. So this plan right now does show some additional plantings being proposed along, along that, along that north property line. But again, with the stipulation that if it has to be upgraded when we get out in the field and actually construct the project, the applicant would be, would be bound to, to making those upgrades in accordance with the, the town to foresters', you know, recommendations and requirements. And then quickly, if we can go to Anthony, what was A8? Which one? That'll be A12. And A12, you can see is what I call a bird's eye view of the building rendering. You can see that it shows the site, the site ingress on the east side, the site egress on the, on the west side of, of the property. It shows, it shows the proposed building in a 3D fashion again with the rooftop amenity occupying the front portion. And you can very clearly hear, see area designated for solar panels and area reserved for, for, for rooftop equipment. And then Anthony, go to what was A9, which will now be A13. So that's a street view of the building. You can get a feel for the, for the materials and the presentation that the, that the building is going to make, going to make from a, from a street view. It's a, you know, in my opinion, it's a pretty accurate representation of how the building is going to, going to appear. I'm sure there, there may be some, you know, some final adjustment in the specific colors to be utilized, but I think the, the concept is, is what our client is, is looking to do. Again, that just shows the, the presentation of the building from the, from the street. And then Anthony, let's go to A10, which will now rename A14. And A14 is the, is the building elevation. This plan shows the, the front and the rear of elevations of the building. It shows the building height, rooftop height of 35 feet to the, to the flat part of the roof, which is what the ordinance limits, ordinance defines for, for flat roof. It's to the, you know, it's to the main part of the roof, to, to the flat part of the, of the roof. I'm not certain about the, what's identified as, as a bulkhead height. I think we'll, we'll get a little testimony from the architect on that. Our intention was, I, I believe, not to ask for or require any relief of building height on that, but I think Mr. Peters pointed out that he thinks we may need some relief on that. So that, that covers that. As to review letters that we got, we have a letter from Mr. Cleed dated February 16th. He identifies the project, provides factual information to it. Just confirm that we are, are providing curb and sidewalk along county line road. Mr. Cleed does point out, Anthony, if you can go back to A9 for me? You're, I'm sorry, the, the new A9, which was A6, the site plan? A6 that I had submitted, mark that. Yeah, maybe, can you zoom in on the site for me a little bit? And Mr. Cleed rightfully points out that the ordinance does, does have a requirement for additional plantings, street trees along the site frontage. However, you can see on this plan that we have, we do have two driveways, you know, an ingress and an egress driveway. And associated with each driveway is a site triangle, 30 by 100 in accordance with county requirements. So we're very limited on any ability to provide additional landscaping or street trees along the site frontage. We do have our site identification sign located in this area. So we would be asking for a waiver of providing any street trees on this particular site due to the limitations imposed by the site triangles and also by the up, the upgraded or the enhanced landscaping that we're going to have at, at the front of the site. So I believe that will provide a very attractive view for the building. I touched on the, the safety islands. And that summarizes my comments related to Mr. Cleed's letter, to Mr. Peters' letter dated February 22nd. He, of course, identifies a couple of variances that we require. Mr. Peters' letter does bring up a big question whether we need variances for the trash enclosure. His letter identifies it as accessory, or his letter identified the requirements for an accessory building. And I don't believe the trash enclosure meets the definition of building by ordinance, so I don't believe there's any relief required for the trash enclosure. It does meet the separation requirements for trash enclosure. So I believe it is, it is in accordance and does not require any relief. I talked about the floor area and believe we've got that clarified. I've added bollards along the side and the back of the building to protect the building and to provide pedestrian safety. Other waivers, we talked about at the original hearing. And then Mr. Peters made a recommendation for changing out one of the species of landscaping for something a little bit smaller, when that mature growth would not exceed the, the requirements or the ability of the buffer. And just last point is that his letter did, his letter did talk about the need potentially for a minor subdivision. We are not proposing any subdivision with this application. We're actually proposing a lot consolidation of, of these two lots into one. And the Jackson ordinance is very specific that it does address that in the definition of subdivision. And it clearly says consolidation is not considered a subdivision. So there's no further action required by, by this board as to any subdivision approval.
Couple of follow-ups. The turning radius or template for a fire truck versus the garbage truck?
Yeah, we'll provide that. What we, what we have on a plan right now, I think, is a 36-foot fire, trash truck. And we'll provide a template for, for a fire truck.
And, and since the last meeting, there was a meeting with Ocean County and waivers were granted?
Correct. The county agreed to accept a road widening easement in lieu of a right-of-way dedication. So our proposed setbacks, as Mr. Cleed pointed out, we have 37 feet to balcony and we have 40 feet to the, to the foundation, which does require variance. And we did provide testimony about that at the initial hearing.
And other than that, the, the remaining technical comments contained within those reports are okay and you'll address them?
Yes.
So we have of Mr. McFarland.
Okay. Any question? No?
Yes, sir. Just real, real quick, Mr. McFarland, we increased the safety island with two, they're both nine feet. There's a small tangent in there that you, you can't see on that plan. You'll see a five feet and a three feet and there's a little tiny piece of tangent in there.
Mr. Chairman?
Yes, sir.
Just a couple of housekeeping items. Mr. McFarland, the zoning officer gave this a site plan number and called it Site Plan 846 with minor subdivision, lot consolidation. So if the applicant's indicating that they're simply going to consolidate the lots, we'll just take, I guess jurisdictional note that only a lot consolidation is required.
Correct.
That's correct. There's no subdivision proposed.
But it was docketed by the zoning officer as a minor subdivision.
Understood. I, I'm not sure why.
Graham, Mr. McFarland, can we talk about the dumpster location? A minute?
Sure. For everyone, we, we talked about where to put the dumpster, how to put the dumpster, where vehicles are going to come and service it. And Mr. McFarland and his group did what we asked them to do. I hate this layout. One at 45 degrees. When they open the doors, it's going to hit two cars, not one, hit two. Can we just? It's one-way circulation, counterclockwise. Put the dumpster in the two locations facing west, facing to the left on the plan. Get rid of those two parking spaces. I think that gives them a, a break even on parking. And have them put a nice dumpster in there, put bollards in front of it so you can set it back. The gate will only travel so far. And at worst, maybe one vehicle might be inconvenienced. This way, two vehicles could be inconvenienced, quite frankly, probably will be. So it, it really, I, I don't want to say it, it doesn't matter from a practical perspective. Anyone who deals with a dumpster, feel free to tell me what you think the best layout for this is. I don't think this is the best one, that's all. No pride in authorship, we asked them to do it. Sorry, just to understand, your, your suggestion was to look at eliminating these two, those two parking spaces? If I can do it with eliminating one, I'd be happy to do it if, if I can. If I can do it with eliminating one, I'd be happy to do it if, if I can. If you want me to eliminate, or if your suggestion is eliminate the two, we could certainly, we could certainly entertain that. I'd just like to keep the parking where it is if there's any way possible. The other, the other alternative would be in, in consideration of that. You know, we talked about these, these safety islands, and still they're, you know, they're, they're both nine feet wide. If they were, you know, cut back to, you know, four feet wide, there's my extra parking space I pick up on, on that aisle. You know, my, my opinion is that, you know, a four-foot safety island is still suitable in the back of this building for this, you know, small site with limited traffic.
I'm just trying to figure out the easiest way for a trash truck to come in.
Right.
I don't want them making K-turns in the back of a parking area, and I don't want the front of the dumpster facing County Line Road.
Agreed. Right. I, I agree. I agree with your comments. We'll certainly take a look at it. I mean, we'll, we'll agree to a condition that says, you know, relocate the dumpster. I just want to keep as many parking spaces as, as we can. But other than that, Mr. Chairman, I, I think the applicant followed the lead that they got from the last hearing. And I think this is a, a better product than we saw at the last meeting.
Much better.
We, we have our architect here who really doesn't have testified except for that one question about the height, and then any questions you have. And Scott Kennel's here for traffic, but it's a county road, it's one way in, one way out. I don't know if traffic is really relevant, but again, he's here for questions. So can we call the architect just to deal with that one height issue?
Sure. Let's see, anyone has any questions? Sure.
Other than dimensionally? No. I think it's a.
No, there's no precedent. Tell him, Sean, there's no precedent between that.
There is no precedent, but through, through the chairman to the professionals, would it make sense, given the comments and the condition, to grant not a nine foot, but maybe an eight foot?
But it won't, it won't let us pick up an extra space now.
One foot won't do anything.
It won't be enough for the space.
All right, scratch.
That's fine, yeah. And, and we have two extra spaces, so we have flexibility.
Scratch. Okay.
All right, and.
Introduce your next witness.
Rich?
So raise, thanks for raising your hand. You saw me swear from testimony information, questions or comments you're about to present before the board. We represent the truth, whole truth and nothing but the truth.
I do.
Kind of give us your full name, spell your last and your affiliation, and then you were previously sworn and qualified in this application as well, correct?
Correct. Richard Tokarski, spelled T-O-K-A-R-S-K-I, with the firm of Tokarski Millman Architects located in Wall, New Jersey.
And you prepared the architectural plans that the board reviewed this evening?
Yes, I did.
Okay, and there was a question that Mr. Peters raised about the height as it relates to those features above the main roof line. Can you describe that in a little more detail so we understand?
Sure. The roof, top of roof is noted as 31 feet, which is the, you know, the top of the flat roof where the roof membrane exists. The top of parapet is at 35 feet, and the top of bulkhead is 41 feet, which is the appurtenances of the elevator, bulkhead and stair tower that accesses the roof.
And that's in the center?
There's a, you know, there's stairs in the center on the roof and also a secondary stair in the back. Sure.
Should we put up?
Maybe the architectural roof plan?
It would be 812, maybe? The new 812 or 814?
We have the architecturals as the first line item, which is 2052, 2056 West County Line.
The first one that we did tonight.
A6. Nope. I think it is 11 or 12.
Now, the roof plan I have is A10, which would be.
But it wouldn't.
Who knows what it was?
Yeah, there you go.
That's it.
Okay.
Yep. So you see, there's a stair tower back here, stair tower and elevator, bulkhead which comes up here, and this is a skylight.
So where are the highest points on the roof of those features?
Is the, the stair tower, both stair towers are the same equal height, which is 10 feet above the 31-foot top of roof.
Okay, and then otherwise, as Mr. McFarland was referring to your various exhibits, his testimony was accurate as to what was proposed?
Correct.
Okay. Questions for the architect?
Yeah. Thank you very much. Mr. Chairman?
Yes, sir.
Mr. Tokarski, the, the bulkhead area, is that just the area of the staircase? It's the elevator, the staircase, which, you know, includes this basic corridor to the door to get to the roof terrace. And then this is an enclosed stairwell. This is a sky, a skylight, which, you know, comes above the roof, which also has glazing around the exterior to let light into the second floor. So I'm, I'm, I'm trying to do this slowly because I'm an engineer, and you guys confuse me sometimes. I understand the need for the bulkhead for the physical build. You have a skylight that's 10 foot higher than the roof of the building? If you look at the rendering here, so this is unoccupable floor space. It's a double-height floor space to the second floor, which has glazing around it and also skylights above. I'm, I'm really just trying to understand.
Yes.
The answer is yes, right?
Yeah. The answer is yes? Yes, it's all at the same height. It's not a bulkhead. It's not necessary. Correct. It's not, it's not required under some building code. The reason I ask is because it would appear that you require variance relief. And at some point, if you're more than 10 feet, 10%, you're at the wrong board. So, so far, you're still at the right board. I don't believe there's an exception for things other than mechanicals like the bulkhead. I'm not sure if I ask you, I ask Mr. McFarland. I just, I want to make sure the board understands what they're approving. Right. I believe it falls on. It doesn't appear that the, that it's just mechanical equipment that creates a bulkhead. There's another archit, and, and I take no exception to the skylight. It's just, when we say it's a bulkhead, the skylight sort of got hidden within it. It's not the bulkhead. There's another feature in there called the skylight. It's 10 foot above the roof. Correct. I believe that falls under the appurtenance definition with, you know, spires, clear stories, you know, stair towers, you know, access, access and mechanical equipment, bulkheads. Fair enough. Thank you.
Anyone? No? Okay.
That's all we have, Mr. Chairman, unless you have questions of Mr. Kennel.
May I ask through the, through the chairman, just, and I, again, apologize, I was trying to look quick. Is there a basement or mechanical downstairs?
No basement, slab.
Crawlspace?
Crawlspace or slab, slab.
Okay, good. Is there anyone from the public that wishes to comment on this application? Could you step up to the microphone? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Okay. I got to tell you, this is much cleaner, much nicer than the first rendition we saw. I hope going forward with other applications, you're going to follow this and, and, and not waste this board's time and energy, you know, doing something that the professionals should do.
I have the message.
Okay, we're clear?
Yes.
All right. Any further comments?
Mr. Dolan? Dr. Campbell? Mr. Riker?
Yes.
Mr. Bernstein? Mr. Herman?
Yes.
Mr. Wall?
Yes.
Mr. Fleming? Mr. Herring? And Mr. Huddak?
Yes. Congratulations.
Thank you, thank you.
Good luck.
Thank you.
Okay, before we adjourn this evening, we need to have, you heard he's been festered in the long day today, that he needs to have a five-minute executive session. So if clears out.
I can do the motion right now. Whereas the, Mr. Chairman, whereas the planning board, the township of Jackson, a certain is, is subject to certain requirements of the Open Public Meetings Act. And whereas the Open Public Meetings Act provides in an executive session not open to the public, may be held for certain specified purposes when authorized by resolution. Whereas it is necessary for the planning board to discuss in a session not open to the public certain matters related to items authorized by NJSA 10,412B, those items being litigation, updates and possible settlement discussions.
Okay, so can I have a motion to go into the executive session? All in favor?
Aye.
No, no, you don't.